Call the meeting to order, meeting of the Congress Select Board for January 11th, 2022. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation, as an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's litigation position, and to reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All right.
Jim Bogart, aye.
Robert Bellbin says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
We are in executive session. Call the meeting back to order, meeting of the Congress Select Board for Tuesday, January 11th. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees, please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellbin, would you read our community prayer?
Yes, sir. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing, as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding, as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bellbin. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public, sir, who'd like to step up to the microphone? Thank you. If you could just introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Chris Mahoney. I reside at 18 Ransom Street. I'm here representing my wife Rebecca. She owns the two Honeydew Doughnut Shops in North Carver. I'm here tonight to ask for the board to help me to get some answers regarding the North Carver water situation department. And the issues we're having with the interruptions in service, we're not only losing revenue from lost business, but we're having issues with some of our equipment right after or within a short time that the water is recharged. We are having to have service companies come out due to sediment, et cetera. This has been ongoing since the system was taken over by the town, and the most aggravating part is the lack of customer accountability. We understand things happen, but a phone call or response through an email would be a good first step. We both tried to call and email Mr. Tracy on quite a few occasions without a single response. And so, we're a small business, even though we have a franchise over our door, and we don't think it's fair for us to have to keep incurring these added costs to not have a contact person to get a hold of. At the very least, if you, as a board, could look into our concerns and maybe come up with some solutions, it would be greatly appreciated. I want to add that Dave Seaborn, who has been great, it's not even his responsibility to be, he's the only one that'll answer, so I'm constantly bothering him with this. I understand there's a project going on, but just for example, in the last, since July, we've had three interruptions in service without an explanation one bit. And some may say an hour isn't a big deal, but I lose customers, and like I said, once everything comes back online, all the sediment that's in the system, when they recharge it, gets slammed into all my small water orifices. So it's a $360 minimum just for my ice machine. So we're around the $4,000 to $5,000 mark just this year alone in service and loss, and never mind loss of business. I can't track exactly how much I'd lose, but especially with the pandemic, the customers are aggravated and angry as it is, and now you're telling them I don't have water, so I just appreciate it. Maybe just get the ball rolling and be recognized, maybe the meeting to officially talk about it.
We appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Bellbin?
I'd like to look at solutions, and one of the solutions I recommend is that the North Carver Water District, and we help with this, to create a phone bank of all the people that are on the North Carver Water District, and that they, if any interruptions come up, that they can make one phone call to all of those people that are on. We're talking a lot of people.
Okay, but this is, again, this is citizens' participation, so this is normally not a discussion.
I understand, but this is, I mean, when you start talking about losing money from businesses, in our town that pay our taxes and they pay a higher tax rate.
I understand, and we'll.
So, I think this is important.
I agree. All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good night. All right, next, I'd like to just take a minute to introduce our new Town Administrator, Mr. Robert Fennessey, to the town. Mr. Fennessey comes to Carver as a seasoned Town Administrator, having previously served the town of Boylston and Kingston. He is a former six-term selectman in his hometown of Plainville, and has been a practicing attorney in Mansfield for many years, focusing his practice on municipal law and family law. We are all very pleased to have him here for the next six months while we continue our search for a permanent Town Administrator, and we look forward to working with him throughout the time to govern the needs of the town as well as the citizens of Carver. Mr. Fennessey, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very excited to be here in the great town of Carver. Come through here many times, and it's nice to be the town, the interim Town Administrator for the next six months. I take a lot of pride in the trust and confidence that the board has put into me to take over this position, and I trust that, you know, we're in that confidence by the board over the next six months. The town has been so welcoming to me, the staff here has been great, getting me up to speed and everything that's going on, and the people that I've met outside the offices too, very warm and welcoming, so I'm very happy to be here, and I look forward to a really good interim basis here with you guys.
Thank you, and again, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the approval of intention to lay out Montello Street as a public way, a portion of Montello Street. You all have the maps in front of you. Mr. Fennessey, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, so, so back, I guess back last fall, this was being put together for the, this parcel, the laying out this, this Montello Street parcel, the board is going to vote to, they intend to lay it out, and after that's done, it's then referred to the planning board. They have 45 days to act on it, to make a recommendation. Once that's done, once the recommendation's made or 45 days pass, then it, then the board then votes to lay out the land. It's going to be submitted to the clerk's office at least eight days prior to town meeting. So those are kind of the timelines in this. So the first thing they're going to do today is to make a motion to have the intent to lay out the land, and it should be, somebody should have a copy of that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. So I move that the Select Board vote its intention to lay out Montello Street portion as a public way from Main Street, Route 58, to an intersection with an accepted portion of Montello Street. All is shown on a plan entitled Plan of Road in the Town of Carver, Mass., Plymouth County, showing locations of easements for the purpose of reconstructing Montello Street and Main Street for the Town of Carver, dated January 11th, 2022, prepared by VHB and on file with the Town Clerk, and to forward this vote and the plan to the Planning Board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to General Law Chapter 41, Subsections 81G and 81I.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Bellbin?
So, this is all in preparation for the Route 44, potential creation of buildings back there. One of the things that I have thought about is, when we approve this, do they block off the older section, location of Montello Street, so that is no longer accessible? So if people want to go to businesses at like Dunkin' Donuts or Abashawn's Hardware, do they now, once we agree to this, and if it's put in, they have to drive past the main entrance, they need to go in now, go in the new one, and backtrack around to get in there? Is there a way that we can keep that front entrance open until they actually build something back there? That's, that's my question, because I think that would be best for the businesses that are there, to keep them a better access to get in to that parking area until something's actually built. Because my worst-case scenario is that they block this off, nothing gets built for five years, meanwhile, these other businesses lose business because people don't want to drive all the way up and around to get to it.
I think Mrs. Weston was explaining earlier, I don't know if you were in the room, that it's only after they build this will they block off the old Montello Street. So that answers your question.
When was this being discussed?
Excuse me? I was here talking to Elaine, and I think Mark might have been here, but that was it.
Okay.
This was before the meeting.
So, that's my, that's my main concern, is that we keep that open.
Well, it's going to, it's going to be kept open until the new one is, is actually built. But having said that, actually, that old entrance is really hazardous. I'm actually glad that it'll eventually go.
Well, it's better than having it moved over now and wait many years for it. I want just something in writing, because when we go to town meeting and we go put this, I want them to understand, the businesses to understand, that just because this gets approved, then, we're not going to close that entrance off right then and there, that it's going to be open until it goes forward and something's built back there. Because like I said, I'd hate to have five or 10 years down the road, and meanwhile, we've lost businesses because of trying to get around the area, it's no longer convenient for the residents.
I think that when, my understanding is when the Planning Board takes action, that's, that's going to be part of the conditions for, for them accepting this.
Hopefully, they watch this, and like I said.
Well, that can be communicated. I mean, we don't have to rely on people just watching this, and that can be communicated. So.
Right.
My question, Mr. Chair, and which I think Elaine is looking into as well, is where, there's going to be a new traffic signal up there, and we're not quite sure where it's going to be, but we're thinking it's going to be at the intersection of 58 and 44, although it's possible it would be at the new, the new Montello Street relocation, but I think that's under discussion.
I think it is under discussion, yeah.
I, I thought that was, it was supposed to go with a new relocated Montello Street and 58. That's where the light, that's what I heard.
There are differing opinions.
I don't see it on this plan.
Right.
Unfortunately, yeah. So we're going to follow up with Mr. Woods.
We'll find out.
And he'll get that information.
I had one other thing.
Yes.
Is that the names of the people that own property, they no longer own those properties. Should there be a new plan submitted to us without those names on it, that actually have Route 44 development on those of owners of the property?
I don't.
That should be updated.
I don't think that affects the layout of, of the road, as we're discussing it tonight.
I'm just putting it out there that.
No, and it's a valid point, but I don't, I don't think it affects the layout of the road, and I think we want to keep in mind the timetable that Mr. Fennessey spoke of earlier in getting this to town meeting.
Right.
And one last point to, to Mr. Bellbin's point, in the notes section, it does say the existing monumentation and ties for the city and county layouts shown in this plan were located during a field survey performed in 2017 and 2019. So that's probably why you have the former owners on here.
Yeah, just it says Carver 2021 Sheet 104 at the top of the page, that's why, and they had already.
That's the new, that's the new information that they've laid over the old layout.
Well, that's what I'm saying here, is that if it says 21, they bought the properties a number of years ago, so you would think the names would be updated.
We should communicate that to the Planning Board as well, when they, when they hold their, their discussions on this.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Our next item this evening is the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District update. Mr. Bellbin?
All right. So a couple of things have happened. The end of December, the district met, and a couple of things that I want to get settled before the end of the year. Number one was an agreement with Wareham to keep it open for another three years, possible three and a half years. We agreed to that. I have to sign the agreement with Wareham as soon as I get the Town Administrator to sit down, sign it, and we're good to go. So the boards approved it, we're just waiting to sit down and sign it with Wareham. So for another three, three and a half years, the transfer station will be open. So that's a very positive for the residents as having an option. The other thing is for town meeting, we also, one of the plans that I was hoping to get done this year, and it did, is we rewrote our agreement with the district, and part of that, it states how the district will run, all right? This agreement needed to be done because Marion's no longer part of it, the district, and when they left the district, it opened the doors for how do we separate the money? If there's any money left over at the end, we're talking 20 years, we're not going to be here. But it also says if there's any debt, because we can incur debt if we have to, and the towns are going to have to pay for it. Well, it's going to go back to say, how much percentage do we do? Is it 25-75? Is it 60-40? We don't know, because it's really up in the air. In our other agreement, it was the assessed value of it, so we've determined that we'll do an assessed value depending on how many people live in towns and how much money the towns get. So pretty much comes out to 60-40, around there, 60-something, 40. So it's fair for the Town of Carver, it's fair for Town of Wareham. It also allows the district to lease out the property if we have to in the future, so there's possibilities of keeping it running for a longer term there. But in order for us to change this agreement, it's got to go to town meeting, and we have to get town meeting's approval. So what I will do is, at a future meeting, when we go to talk about these, I'll actually give everyone a copy, because I sent one to you already, I'm not sure if I sent it to everyone, but I wanted to make sure for this meeting, that you see it, you can see what happens, see what we did, how we've changed the agreement, and it sets us up for the next 20 or 30 years. And that's our big thing, is to set the next group of people coming in, that they can be a success, and that's what this agreement does. So I'm very happy with it, and my other members. We've worked hard on this, our attorneys worked hard on it, so it just, it protects our town, and that's the biggest thing.
Absolutely. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Two questions.
Yes.
Is there a full board now, three from each town?
Yeah, we have a full membership of board. Little rocky to an extent at one point, but everything got settled away with, and we have a full board right now, six members, which is great, it's three and three, and that's what was so good about this, is that we all came together, we all discussed everything, and it was, it was just so easy to work with everyone. And that's what's a good thing, when you have a good team, that you can work together with things. So we have a great executive, Jeff Osuch, he's been a super help with us. So the, the next big thing for us for this year is to hire new legal counsel. That's the next thing on our books, because our counsel's retiring. We have, I think, three applicants so far, and we'll start interviewing in February for our new counsel. We don't suspect anything legal with us. All of our legal problems are gone, so, and that's what's even better, is that we don't have any legal problems, we have very little bills to pay, and it's a lot of just paperwork every year to make sure that we pay our insurance premiums, because that's going to protect the both towns.
How are the sticker sales compared to what you guys expected?
I don't have the new sticker sales yet for this year, but I want to say it was averaging about 100 to 130 residents from Carver going there, if I remember correctly, looking at the numbers, so, and you had to pay for bags. You pay for your fee for your sticker, and then you had to pay for bags. And if you recycle a lot, your regular trash is going to go down, so you don't have to pay for as many bags. They've done some, Wareham's done an awesome job, and that's one of the big things. Wareham has done an awesome job running it. They cleaned it up, made it flow better, they've changed over their compactor, so the compactors are working better, and they had their hazardous waste day, was a huge success for both Carver and Wareham. It worked really smoothly, and they did really well. I think it was something like $17,000 that they paid for that. So that came out of the fees for the district, so, I mean, it's a, it's a great opportunity for Carver to keep, keep involved in it. Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Anything else?
No questions. I just want to thank you for your continued work on this, throughout everything and the committee, and even if it's 100 and something people, it's, it's an option, so I just want to thank you.
No, thank you, and I thank you, my, my, my other members, I want to thank them, because without them, we wouldn't be able to do it. So thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Hewens, anything?
No, no.
Okay. Mr. Bellbin, I'd also like to thank you for all your hard work with the district, and I know the town appreciates it.
Thank you.
So, anything else on this item? All right. Moving right along. Next up is a vote to authorize Robert Fennessey, the interim Town Administrator, to be the authorized representative of Plymouth County ARPA grants on behalf of the town.
I'd like to move that we vote to authorize Robert Fennessey, interim Town Administrator, to be the authorized representative of Plymouth County ARPA grants on behalf of the town, that's American Recovery Act, Plan Act.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Bellbin?
With that ARPA, does that allow for the town to use the money to give bonuses or anything to emergency personnel within the town? Is that a?
That's part of it, is, it's available for that, so.
So, and if I could, I think, I'm not really on this agenda point, but I think we had a previous meeting. At some point, we will have refreshment. Mr. O'Brien, the Plymouth County Treasurer, what's, what's his first name? Tom. Tom O'Brien, thank you. We'll have Mr. O'Brien back, and he, we can have a discussion with him on ARPA and how we allocate, and I think that needs a substantial line item with the board.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Next item is a Town Administrator update. We have no Town Administrator update.
I have one thing.
Oh, okay. All right, Mr. Fennessey?
No, it's not really an update, just we're putting together the warrant, as you know, and there's a number of placeholders by some of the selectmen, so if you have placeholders, if you can get the information to me, you know, the language that you want to use for whatever it is, and we can put that into it and start building that warrant. It seems like it's far away, but tell me, it'll be here before you know it.
Yes, it will, and the sooner we can do that, the better, because at some point, we're going to have some pretty long meetings reviewing some of the, some of the warrant articles, so the, whatever we can get done earlier, the, all the better. So, is that it, Mr. Fennessey?
Yeah, and if anybody needs help drawing up the articles, let me know, and I'll help them out, so.
All right, great, thank you. Mr. Bellbin?
I just sent the, the agreement to the board members here, and I sent it to you too, and that would be for the warrant, for that one article for the district.
All right. Let's see, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting will be January 18th, next Tuesday. Let's see, we have the approval of the minutes of 12:15, 12:16, and 12:21. Is there a motion on 12:15?
I move that we approve the minutes of 12:15-21.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up is 12:16. Is there a motion on 12:16?
I move that we approve the minutes of 12:16-21.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Next up is the minutes of 12:21. I have, well, is there, I have one correction to 12:21. On page five, at the very top, let's see, at the end of that, it should say, it says, Townsend stated he does not think it is sketchy that it was spoken about at the last Select Board meeting. He stated that, he stated there was not a full board, and he wanted the full board to be present to make the decision, and it should be added, and that it would be, and that the item would be on the agenda at the next meeting. So I would just like to make that correction to those, to those minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of 12:21-21, as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Well, question, on those, page seven, with the request for the one-day special license, you had recused yourself.
Seven. Let me, I did recuse myself.
So then in the vote, it says 4-1. Should it say 3-1-0?
No, recusal is not a vote.
So, but it still shouldn't say 4-1, if you didn't vote in favor of it.
Actually, it should be, yeah, it should be, this is the one, actually, it should say 3-1-1.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what it should, it should say. I believe the vote was three in favor, Mr. Bellbin voted against, and I recused myself.
Well, if you recused yourself, that doesn't count as a vote.
Okay.
Right, but it's saying it is, if four to one, he recused himself, it should be three.
Three to one.
Four to one.
No, it should be four zero.
Well, I voted against it.
Oh, okay, so it should be four to one, three to one.
Right.
Right, that's what we're saying.
It says four to one. Okay. Ms. Hewens, would you add that correction to your motion?
Yes. With the, with the vote, it said three to one.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, the approval and release of executive session minutes of 12:20-21 and 12:21-21. Is there a motion on 12:20?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Second.
And to make clear, this is approval and release.
This is approval, approve and release. Correct. Discussion?
Question for Elaine. Elaine, the edits that I made yesterday.
They are in there, printed out as a final document.
Okay.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and the 12:21 executive session meds?
I'll make a motion. We approve and release for 12:21.
Actually, wasn't that the meeting just between Jim and me?
I don't think so, no.
I think it was.
I think it was.
Was it?
Okay, I would, go ahead, you guys can go then. Go ahead, I don't care.
Just a technicality.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
It was, okay.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we approve and release the executive session minutes of 12:21-21.
I'll second it.
So, thank goodness.
12:20.
12:20, sorry, that's the way that should have been voted, was 12:20, right, so we met the day before regular meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on 12:21?
No, this is for 12:20-21.
We already voted on that. You already voted on that.
We already voted on 12:20-21.
He wants us to revote.
It's backwards, okay. All right, never mind.
So right now, we have a motion and a second on 12:21, 12:21-21. Is any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Weston?
You guys can't vote on it, you weren't even there.
So they voted on 12:21-21, which is correct. You need to go back to 12:20.
Revoting.
Okay.
I'll resend my, my motion on 12:20.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the executive and release of the executive session minutes of 12:20-21.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, Select Board notes, there are none this evening. Select Board Community Announcements. Ms. Bogart? Mr. Velvin?
Sure. My number one thing is COVID's still out there, and it's getting worse for some people. Luckily, the Omnavirus isn't as bad as the initial one, but it's still out there. People are still sick, and hospitals still busy. So just protect yourself as much as you can. Election info is on the Town Clerk's website. If you're interested in running for election, please take a look at that and meet the dates. Dog licenses and the town census got mailed out. I did mine today, so please get those back to the Town Clerk's office, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
Just wanted to welcome Mr. Fenessy. Thank you, gentlemen. Look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Hewens?